Okay. At this time I'd like to call the school board meeting to order. Roll call please.
Cody Brubilski.
Present.
David Schmidt.
Here.
I am present. Brian Mahan.
Here.
Brian Geezy.
Present.
Do you wish to pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Virtue card reading.
Virtue card reading. Consideration. Consideration is being thoughtful of other people and their feelings. You consider how your actions affect them. You take careful attention to what others like and don't like and do things that give them happiness. You're practicing consideration when you respect other people's needs and feelings, consider others' needs as important as your own, stop and think how your actions will affect others, put yourself in other people's shoes, give tender attention, think of little things to bring others happiness. Affirmation. I am considerate of others. I stop and think about how my actions affect them. I do thoughtful things for people.
Thank you, Ed. Order of Education Guidelines. With an open mind, we will establish an atmosphere that allows expression of all views, even when views are not in line with all members. We will work collaboratively with the district administrator by having open and honest conversations around district priorities. We will work collaboratively with all stakeholders to monitor key indicators so that equitable teaching and learning results in high achievement. We will work toward building a trusting environment where both students and staff can reach their full potential and celebrate successes in academics, the arts, and athletics. At this time, we're at public comments and... We don't have much public out there tonight. Pretty quiet. But we have a very special guest in the audience and under showcasing schools and student learning, we had the opportunity to have a presentation by Mr. Michael Wilson on the topic of Trees for Tomorrow. Mr. Wilson, if you are just in that area, we're gonna have that camera on you. I'm glad you're here. Welcome and just feel comfortable and what do you have to say?
Alright, so Mr. Johnson told my advisor, Ms. Bradyle, about Trees for Tomorrow and it is a five-day camp up in Eagle River to kind of show like the area of natural resources careers. And I applied for it. I had to answer a few questions, write some paragraphs about like my qualifications and I got accepted out of thirty people.
I'm gonna have to check.
So it was a few weeks ago I got back. So we went up there and what they did is they would have the jobs that they were talking about. They'd have one of the people come in and talk about it and kind of show us through, maybe give a little sample of what they do every day. And we got to ask questions and we did some activities just to kind of try to put ourselves in their direction, which careers we want to go.
What does Trees for Tomorrow, what does that organization stand for?
They are just trying to carry on nature to the next generation. It started out as a lumber factory type of deal and it was during the Great Depression it started. I think it was nineteen forty-four.
Wow.
And they had people that didn't have jobs work there and create lumber and everything and it just kind of turned into an education side of it.
And you have an interest in this location possibly?
Possibly, yes.
Okay. Did that week up there help kind of focus you on some different areas you might be interested in?
Yep, I was just kind of, I was thinking I was like interested in the whole area but then it kind of narrowed it down a little bit.
Michael, would you just give us an idea of what experts came in and what? I mean, I picture you up in one of those trucks and with a chainsaw.
Well, there was a forester which they walk through the woods and they use a measuring tool, I forgot what it was called, but they put it at twenty-five inches away from your eye and they measure how thick the tree is and how tall it is and then they find out how much lumber they'd be able to get out of them and whether it was a pult tree which would be sent to the mills to make paper. Then there was also the fire. They had a DNR fire unit and they showed us like their trucks and everything, all the tools that they have. Then there was also a DNR conservation warden that came in and told us about some of the experiences he's had and like what he had to go through to become an officer. Then there was also a wildlife rehabilitation person. They showed some of the, they brought in a few animals to show. And then... That's all I can remember right now.
So this was just about trees? This was about natural resources altogether?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Were you up at the tree handling place up there? Was that UW Point has their...
No, we didn't.
No? Okay, I was just wondering because, you know, I know that class is going on up there. Okay.
Did you feel like you're going to school in the summertime?
Yeah.
You also did fun things too, right?
Because they were doing natural resources program.
We went kayaking and what else would you want? Went hiking a little bit. How many students were there? Thirty. Okay.
That's an honor to be selected.
Yeah.
They were from all over.
Yep.
From all over the state?
Michigan.
Michigan, yep.
Oh, really? Oh, yeah. Out of state even.
Out of state.
Yeah, cool. So you glad you did it?
Yeah.
So what did you narrow, like what did you say? You narrowed down a little bit?
Yeah, well, I was kind of, I was either leaning towards conservation warden or fisheries biologist.
Okay.
Oh, cool. Nice.
I'm just so pleased you took the opportunity to come in here tonight and answer these questions and I think it does a good job of showcasing what we can do, you know, with the programs that are out there. Really appreciate the efforts you take to get up there. I'm sure you had to get rides for mom and dad up there. Not easy coordinating all that. So we do appreciate that too, mom. Maybe we'll get you back here, Michael.
Alright.
What are you going into?
I'm going into eleventh grade.
Eleventh grade. We'll get you back.
Last time when he was here it was Maple Serra.
Yeah, it was Maple.
He's hanging out around trees.
He treats this stuff. Thank you.
How's the tortoise doing?
We've got two of them now.
Oh, I got one. My goodness.
Well, thanks for coming in, you guys, and cheering.
Very much appreciate it.
Enjoy the rest of summer.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You want more school stuff, right? Thank you so much. That'll probably be the funnest part of the meeting, Michael.
I'm a little offended. I was about to say.
You love your game.
I'm all for stopping right now.
I heard a second. Is that an option?
No. Well, we're gonna move on to Mr. Brown. Mr. Brian Gill, Director of Student Services. Do you have an update for us this evening?
I'm presenting later, so I will pass till then.
Very good. Ms. Knight?
Same here.
Very good. Have a good night, Ms. Brown.
Bye, thank you.
Michael, thanks for coming.
And then we're gonna move on to other boardwork. District wireless system. We had a presentation last month by our technical provider. They made recommendations on improvements to our wireless system. They had offers to come down, but I felt it was pretty straightforward on what their recommendations were and what our needs were. The cost was a little bit less than we anticipated and Lynn, do you want to talk a little bit about that?
Sure, sure. We actually went over the costs late last week and it's coming in around about a hundred and fifty thousand. We do have twenty-eight thousand dollars in a teach infrastructure grant that we can use, so we're only funding approximately a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. Heartland will also, as in the past, will offer a, help us with a zero percent lease. I was thinking about doing it over four years, but with this small dollar amount, I'm really excited to do it over three years, so it's a great opportunity.
Any questions on the wireless system?
Just, is that the only option we had or were there other quotes that we...
We actually looked at two systems. We looked at an in-house wireless system or a cloud-based. We wanted to stick with Cisco because once you start getting all different name brands in here, you are losing compatibility then. So we stuck with our Cisco brand name. It's actually the Meraki system that we're using for our wireless, which is part of the Cisco brand.
As far as the company could do it though, I'm wondering, is that the only company or did we ask for other companies to quote that to make sure we're getting the best deal?
Well, we've been working with Heartland for the past fourteen years, I believe, so I'm...
I mean, I understand that, but...
I think they are the exclusive people that work with this Cisco.
Okay.
So...
And this is kind of a small part of the overall services they provide us and I know that, you know, we have to evaluate that in the overall picture on an ongoing basis. Would you agree, Lynn?
Yes.
So is that in-house or is that a cloud?
It's a cloud-based.
It is a cloud-based.
But that's a good point and what happens is if you start fragmenting that and going with other providers, they certainly will sell you another product and they'll say it's compatible. And then before you know it, you've got...
Well, if they're the only one that's doing, we certainly have, that's fine, but if that wasn't the option, okay.
Good question. Good question. Anybody else? Ms. Knight? At this point, I'd like to call, put a motion up for approval of the district wireless system.
So moved.
Second.
We have a first and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. School nutrition policies. Lynn, do you want to talk about that?
Sure. So it shouldn't be any surprise to the board that this was coming to the board. We've been talking about it for a couple of months now. We did have a policy, it was eighty-five hundred. When I looked at eighty-five hundred policy, I specifically looked at the negative account balances portion of that policy and in that policy it did say that we would offer an alternative meal. So based on what the board has been conveying to me, I did change that policy. So it states that the students receiving free or reduced price meals will be permitted to purchase a USD-approved meal regardless of whether the student has a negative account balance. So we will be offering meals to all students. In conjunction with this policy, I also found policy number sixty-one fifty-two point oh-two, which is school nutrition fees. Now, we've never had this policy before. Northland Pines had this policy. And when I looked at Northland Pines and the way they do business in their food service area and the way we would want to do business in our food service area, it just made sense that we were kind of mirroring each other. So the school nutrition fees addresses the negative balances where if they are below fifty dollars, if they pay more, if they're, you know, negative fifty dollars, then we will be sending them to collections. So it just talks about the process we're gonna follow if they do fall below the zero dollar amount. In the past, we never had a process, but now we have this policy and we will be informing our parents the policy in the months of July and August, so everybody is going to be aware of our school nutrition policies. On the second page of that school nutrition fees, you can see for staff meals, we have a zero tolerance. If they don't have money in their account, they will not be able to purchase a meal.
For staff meals, very good. One note on this. You know that Tahrir had wanted to provide an alternative lunch.
They suggested, yeah.
Suggested. We as a board felt that that would further ostracize certain students that may or may not be able to afford lunches. There are students that run into a negative balance for reasons sometimes beyond their control and one thought I had, and this is something maybe we can flesh out, is possibly looking for donations from the public to help defray these costs that some families that may or may not be able to afford it. I don't know about the feasibility of that, but I just feel strongly that I would myself donate to somebody that's struggling to get simply food in their mouth. I think it's, you know, I know that each circumstance is different and certainly some of these families need to go through applying for the free or used lunch and need to do the things they need to do and maybe they haven't done that. But for those that may otherwise not be qualified or for whatever reasons, I would like to somehow be able to donate to that to help defray that cost before it goes to collection. I don't know if that's a possibility, but I'd like to put it out there. Any thoughts or questions on that?
I agree.
Are we still using the food service charter?
Yes.
Yes.
For this next year.
I agree with the donations and I also thank Lynn for striking the alternative on the policy because I think that every one of us agrees that we don't want to do that.
No. I like your idea. I've got a few ideas on that, but...
We can flesh it off.
Yeah, now is not the time.
Good, good.
The way Diana, we're talking about, you know, we're not gonna be, if a family is under fifty thousand or fifty dollars, we're not gonna next day send them to collections. That's not the way we operate. What we planned on doing was waiting till the end of the year, you know, giving families a really, a good chance, you know, informing them. We have to inform them three times anyway before we send them to collections, but wait till the end of the year when we look at the final balances and then after all the options have been exhausted, then we do it. I mean, we certainly don't want to cause a hardship on anybody, but...
Right. And we, I think, you know, I know that, you know, what you've done here, you've tried to do the best for the students.
Thank you, thanks. I appreciate that.
We recognize that and thank you for that. Much, Brian.
Can I just add? So would it be a problem to set up some donations? Do you have an idea of how that could look?
Off the top of my head, no.
I think we fleshed it off.
Yeah, I think the board needs to talk about that, yeah.
Okay. Yep. Well, with that in mind, I'd like to call for a motion on approval of school nutrition policies as presented by Lynn and thank you Lynn for finding that policy on the beach.
I move to accept it.
We have...
Our second, whatever word.
We have first. No, second. We have first and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. WIA senior high membership renewal approval. Somebody want to tell us about that?
Do you want to play unscholastic sports?
The truth is that.
I'm looking for a motion on...
I make the motion to accept it.
Second.
We have first and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Strategic plan review. Terry.
Yeah, so we are in our third year next year looking at continuing to work on our strategic plan that we have. So in your board packets, you have kind of an overview of the work that's been happening in each building, seventeen, eighteen, eighteen, nineteen, nineteen, twenty, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that I can and I know Keith is here from the high school and Brian certainly can answer any questions around his areas of expertise. So any questions on that? So the thinking has been not changing that strategic plan every year, but really continuing the work that we have been doing and really supporting and helping the teachers instead of, you know, constant change.
I would like to still see that December meeting that we had in just reviewing how the current strategic plan fits the teachers. What do you think of that?
In what kind of way?
Remember we had the discussion at the elementary, high school, middle school?
Sure.
It seemed to be a very good avenue to see if we're actually doing, following what we see we're gonna be following. I don't, I think we could create any ones maybe, but it's all just a checkup on how we're doing and sticking to our strategic plan. One focus, I think, some of this information, this strategic plan is definitely gonna be influenced by our financial position and, you know, that's gonna be up in the air here as we explore our alternatives and providing a sustainable future for our district. And I think that directly impacts our ability to move forward in the strategic plan in many areas. If we don't have the financial ability to move forward in these areas, we may indeed be somewhat inhibited from completing those things that we have identified as important. So that portion I need to do as we continue to evaluate the financial resources that we have and what we need to do as a district to be sustainable. Well, thank you very much, Terry, with regards to that notice.
So if you have any questions, you've got this document and this has been an ongoing, you know, sideways work because we don't want people, I mean, it's hard to lay out a strategic plan and then just have people move to it. So it's been a gradual, kind of a gradual release.
You gotta live with it. You gotta live it every day.
Yep.
Annual notices. Notice of academic standards, educational options.
And these are notices that each year we have to have posted, so...
Motion for sustainability and special needs scholarship program. These are pretty straightforward. Any questions on any of those?
And they're all posted out on the internet.
Yeah. Brian, can you just talk about the special needs scholarship program?
Sure, the special needs scholarship program, like was stated, it's posted on the special ed side of our webpage. And what it is, it's the availability of a scholarship for a student with a disability to attend a private school that has been DPI-approved that offers students with disabilities services within the private school. And in order for them to obtain this scholarship though, they would have to, by this point, already applied for open enrollment in three different districts and been denied. So this is something DPI put into place for some of our families that are applying in open enrollment because many districts have the caps in place. So if they're looking at alternatives to provide services to their student with disabilities, but they're being denied due to caps three times, this says, well, then you from your home district have the availability to get a scholarship to go to a private school, but that school has to be on the DPI list. And there is only one in our area right now and that is assumption. They are on that list, but two, like I said, there are things in place for families to seek other options before we would have to pay that scholarship for them to attend a private education, so...
Thank you, Brian.
That would come out of our...
We would pay that scholarship, yes.
Yeah.
But we don't have anybody in that situation.
No. No, no.
The notices need to be approved. I offer a motion to approve these notices as presented.
Second.
We have a first and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Seclusion restraint report.
Yep, so it was in your board packet. I also had a presentation, but without internet. I'm just gonna share with you some of my notes. Every year, our number of seclusion and restraints have gone down every single year. This year, altogether between seclusion and restraint, we only had thirteen incidences throughout the whole school year. And in those incidences, we had none in the fourth quarter, which is good. So some of the work that we have been doing to support in those efforts, as maybe you know, I am our district-trained non-violent crisis intervention trainer and we've been offering that training as a district since before I came. Keith is a former instructor of it, so it's been quite a few years and we're up to about forty staff who are trained throughout the district to learn how to verbally de-escalate a student before ever becoming physical. And I think our work around multi-tiered systems of support and the verbal piece of non-violent crisis intervention have really helped us to be proactive to help students so we're not getting to the point of having to restrain or seclude a student. Also too, in running the report and looking at names to see if there's students with or without disabilities because within that report, you'll see how many students are with and without. And I'm happy to report too, in our work with functional behavioral assessments and behavior intervention plans, every student that was in a situation of being restrained had a behavior plan in place. And since getting that in place and people following that behavior intervention plan, the number of times that student was restrained decreased by them having a behavior intervention plan, which was good to see to say we're writing quality plans to help it so students are no longer in those situations on a regular basis. The one thing that I'm doing, and I tried it out with the high school this year and I'm gonna be doing it with all three schools next year, I'm gonna kind of have a training with teachers to explain their role in implementing the IEP because behavior plans are new to them as well. So a lot of times when they give a behavior plan, they think, oh, the special education teacher is gonna be taking care of that. But really, it's everyone's job to know that plan because they can display that behavior at any point in time. So it's important that we all know it and we all implement it. So this year, in early, late winter, I want to say, February-ish, I talked with staff and explained to them, when you see these, it's important for you to know as well and implement it. And it was very well received by the high school staff to say, okay, I better understand what my role is when I have a student with disabilities in my class, so...
So you said there were thirteen incidences. Were there some that had multiple situations or...
Some students were, yeah.
Okay.
So...
It wasn't thirteen individuals?
Nope, it was six individuals total. And of those six, two, only one had multiple occurrences. The rest, there was a single incident that happened once and none the rest of the year, so...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good job. Good job.
Do you have any questions or...
Keep up the good work.
I will share the presentation I had for tonight with you when we have internet again tomorrow and then if you have further questions, feel free to email or call me as well.
Okay. Thank you very much, Brian. And then we also in our package had a student handbook called Hope for Your College. Quite a lot of information here. Can I push you to the like, the like, Hope for Your College? Can I get some work done?
Yep, so I think all of them received some touch up. So if you want to, if you haven't had a chance to look at them yet, look at them and then if you have any questions, you know, this is something for your, I mean, these are really, we were packing them last week. So the buildings have been working on them, so go ahead and take a look at them and then ask. You can certainly go through me or go right to the principal.
What's the youth athletics code together? Is it the youth athletic board? That helps with...
Yes.
Okay, I was curious, so...
Those aren't in the paper package, so I didn't copy them. They're online.
Online.
I mean, I don't think there are that many changes. It was only a couple of changes at the high school anyway.
And they do sign off, they're online, so they don't...
But please ask questions and please look them over because, you know, many eyes on these are good.
The behavior plans are included in our package. I think, you know, the biggest revision in the Humpsey, the policy was rewritten a little bit to make it a little bit more understandable and...
Brief.
Brief is a good word. I didn't want to say that. It's something that may be more easy to implement and follow and understood by parents and staff as well, maybe. It's something that we're gonna be working with this next year, so. Want to thank John for that rewrite. All of those really are for informational purposes only and, but again, as Mr. Whitmore indicated, the more eyes we have in this document, these documents, the better. Thanks very much for the work.
Good bedtime read.
Worked on one of that. We very much, very much appreciate it. Policy governance. This month was very, not a bad month for policy governance. We have two to approve. The first is governance management connection. Terry, you want to just...
I certainly can.
Actually, we got, they're all using the old ones.
So governance management connection. The district administrator is the board's sole point of connection to the operational organization. The board will direct the operational organization only through the district administrator functioning as the chief executive officer.
And this policy, you know, was sent off the board and we're looking for any kind of, you know, issues. The strength in this one, I think this board has been very good at... The strength in this one, I think this board has been very good at, this is a strength that I didn't get to put in there. Strength is that we do practice this. We don't, I don't run, I don't go to Keith or the principals and, you know, try to investigate things. I usually typically go right to Terry unless otherwise directed. He may say, Paul, you know, if it's something that, you know, I need to follow up on. But, you know, our sole contact has been Terry and it's been working out really good. Any other kind of questions or strengths or weaknesses in that relationship? Concerns? Okay. I'd like to call for a motion to approve BSR one government, government management connection. We have a first and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unity of control.
All right. Unity of control. Only decisions of the board acting as a governing entity are binding on the district administrator. So accordingly, unless specifically authorized and delegated by the board at a public meeting, individual board members or subgroups of board members have no authority to give instructions or otherwise direct the district administrator in the management or operations of the district. And board member or board committee requests for information or assistance, unless authorized by the board as an entity, or board president may be rejected by the district administrator if in his or her judgment complying with, complying will require material commitment of staff, time, and resources, is unreasonable or is disruptive to district operations.
Thank you, Terry. This is another one that, you know, we've kept Terry as that main person there. And if anything is going to take Terry's time to investigate, it needs a board action. We need to, as a board, have a forum and make that direction for myself individually to approach Terry and give him direction how to do something that is inappropriate and not something we practice. There may be times whereby committees or other individuals on the board may be specifically authorized to perform a function. But in the last year, that has not happened. I call for a motion to approve the BSR P unity of control. We have a first.
Second.
Second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Administrator succession, OE two, this simply calls for a successor in case the administrator is unable to perform the functions of his position. It's clearly spelled out within the policy that the next in line is...
Brian Grill.
Brian Grill.
Oh, and Lynn.
And Lynn.
And Lynn. Lucky people.
Somebody's going to make the financial decision.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's going to be a tag team.
Who makes the snow day decision, Brian?
No.
He enjoys it.
Yeah.
At school board convention, if all is just to write that.
Every year.
OE two calling for a motion to approve OE...
I made the motion to approve the second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. OE four, personnel administration. Brief description.
Yes. The district administrator shall assure the recruitment, employment, development, evaluation, and compensation of district employees in a manner necessary to enable the district to achieve its results policies.
We charge Terry with that responsibility under OE four. And, you know, we look, if you look at the body of evidence, you know, creating the programs for new hires, creating, working with compensation from directing or delegating that responsibility. Done a very good job of it. Motion on the floor to approve OE four.
So move. Second.
We have a first and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. GP one, board purpose. Relatively straightforward, want to, Terry?
I certainly do. The Board of Education of the School District of Nekusa represents, leads, and serves the district's owners and holds itself accountable to them by committing to act in their best interests and by ensuring that all board and organizational action is consistent with law and the board's policies.
Thank you, Terry. Yeah, we're here to represent our stakeholders and I think we've all demonstrated that responsibility. Clearly defined, I'm calling for a motion to approve GP dash one.
So move. Second.
We have a first and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Consent agenda. Anything that we want to discuss on the consent agenda?
Keith, you want to talk a little bit about Heather and Megan?
Sure. So Heather is the family consumer science teacher, as you know. And she has accepted a position as a director of education for a foundation. So it'll still be education-related, but not, not a teaching role. She was with the district for two years. And then Megan was with the district for ten years. She has accepted a job as an associate principal at Merrill High School. As many of you know, she's been looking at different districts. She's student taught, taught, moved into administration all in Nekusa. And so I think this will be a fantastic opportunity for her.
And I think the board received her resignation, correct?
Yeah. And so, yeah. So I would ask that you accept both those resignations.
And thank them.
We wish them the, we wish them the best in their future and thank Megan and Ms. Erickson for their time here in the district. Thank you, Ms. Johnson. At this time, I'd call for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So move. Second.
We have a first and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Wow. Forgot to do that question.
You're moving us along.
Can you keep up?
Yep. Really, Lynn, you're laughing.
Sorry.
Future agenda items. Our board workshop is scheduled for August fifteenth, two thousand nineteen. Ritter meeting, August twentieth, two thousand nineteen. We're going to be looking at overarching results as usual. Also, the board slash district administrative relations. Operational expectation OE three, treatment of stakeholders. And global expectations GP three, gathering style. We'll also be looking at approving this play handbook and a wellness policy update. Pretty soon we're beginning to have a new hire. When does that start?
The new teacher?
New teacher.
I guess...
Act one. Act two, the twenty.
Yeah. That week.
So we'll be seeing some dates going across for that.
My gosh, that's a month away.
We'll be having any...
What?
It's kid's school contracts.
High school, the forum. And Kate, well, I was there last year. I don't know if anybody else made it. This year, Mr. Mahan is going to be giving a presentation on his, with regards to...
Yeah, what are you going to be doing? Maybe we should ask him.
With regards to his professional responsibilities as a drug detective with the city of Nekusa. I'm looking, very much looking forward to that, if you want to chat about that.
I think we're just going to talk about what drug trends we're seeing in our local communities and kind of give an overview of signs and, you know, what to look for, what we're seeing in our communities, so people can be aware. That's the plan.
And we get to meet the newest officer on the force as well.
Correct. He'll be there.
He'll be there.
He's got, he's got four legs.
You heard what?
I heard he's mean.
He's already been.
He's doing a good job. Yeah.
If anybody wants to meet him, he'll be at Monsef River tomorrow evening.
Yeah, five thirty, five thirty.
Here now?
Any other dates that are coming up that people want to get out there for us as a group? I think just the new teacher thing, we'll get that. It's always good to see those folks.
Well, I'll put that in the board update. I'm working on a board update right now.
There you go. Okay. At this time, we are going to adjourn into closed session for consideration of motion. Well, consideration of motion to adjourn into closed session pursuant to section nineteen point eight-five, one C of Wisconsin statutes, statutes, to consider employment, promotion, compensation, or performance of evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, specifically to discuss employee's contract status. Looking for a motion and we're going to close session. We have a first and a second. Roll call, what, please?
Code of the Bill Skate.
Yes.
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 Yes. Brian Mahan.
Yes.
Brian Geezy.
Yes. At this time, we are convening in closed session.
Thank you, guys.